Next, we have NeighborWorks, Southern New Hampshire. They are the applicant. This is Lunedary Lending Trust, the owner. Tax map 12, lot 59-3. Is an application acceptance in a public hearing for a formal review of a two-lot subdivision, lot 73 Trail Haven Drive, which is just off Mammoth Road. And this is zoned AR1. And we've got the completeness.
I'm going to let Cynthia start.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to give an overview that the next three plans all have to do with the NeighborWorks project. If you can look in the board. It's going to involve three separate actions by the board. The first one is to create a subdivision where they're going to actually separate the two lots. One will retain the existing previously approved elderly housing project, which is partially complete. And so that will be addressed as an amended site plan, probably third in the process. So it'll be subdivision, and then the site plan for the actual townhomes, the workforce housing townhomes. And then the third item is an approval of the amended plan that's left with the existing elderly housing. So with that, John.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. There's one outstanding checklist item. It has an associated waiver request. Assuming the board grants a waiver, staff would recommend the application be accepted as complete. Applicant is requesting waiver to 3.08, which requires a stormwater drainage study. There's no construction proposed as part of the subdivision application. The applicant has provided stormwater drainage report as part of the site plan application. Therefore, staff would recommend granting the waiver.
Okay. And then once it's complete, so.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the applicant's request for the waiver as outlined in staff's recommendation memorandum dated 10 July 2013.
Second. Motion by Lynn, second by John. Any discussion by the board on the waiver? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Atentions, chair is affirmative, and the waiver is granted. And this makes the application complete. I'll accept a motion for completeness.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the application as complete per staff's recommendation memorandum dated 10 July 2013.
Okay. Lynn's made the motion, John's done the second. Any discussion on the completeness? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Atentions, chair is affirmative, and the application is complete. And this starts the presentation in the 65-day timeframe and wish for us to write a decision. So Earl.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Earl Blatchford. I'm with Hayner Swanson at Three Congress Street in Nashua, representing the applicant, NeighborWorks of Southern New Hampshire. Robert Turinney, the director of NeighborWorks, is with me tonight, as is Tom Krebs from NeighborWorks. And the project architect, John Jordan, is here as well for when we get to the site plan. We were before the board on December 5th to do a conceptual presentation. We've been very busy since then, but really, the substance of the application hasn't changed that much since we talked to you. We've just done a lot of work, a lot of design work, a lot of meetings in May, and which brings us here tonight. We've been through the design review process. We've had several meetings regarding the site plans with several different boards. And we think the plans are in very good shape. The subdivision, just a quick overview, is the current parcel is 49.9 acres. The Widmore Estates parcel, which our firm designed about 10 years ago and the board approved, as you know, it's the Trail Haven Drive and one six-unit building was constructed, and the parcel has, the product is set idle since then. NeighborWorks is in negotiation with the owner. And as part of that, we're proposing a two-lot subdivision to create a parcel for the NeighborWorks project. It would be identified as parcel 59-4. It's 20.1 acres, and it's in the northerly portion of the project. Do you have the display plan? Do we have a subdivision display plan that we include?
Not that I'm aware of. Didn't, I don't know. No, we don't.
Okay. It's the left portion of the northerly portion that's shown as new parcel 59-4. That is the parcel that's being proposed for the NeighborWorks site plan. And then the new lot, 59-3, will be 29.8 acres. That's the remainder of the Widmore parcel. It will include all the improvements that have been built to date, plus what would be considered Phase Two of the project to complete the southerly portion of the Widmore project. It also contains the entire conservation easement that was created as part of the Widmore Estates approval that has been deeded to the town. The site is, for anyone who's been on the site, it's predominantly wooded. There are a lot of wetlands on site. It has extensive frontage on Mammoth Road. It's located on the easterly side of Mammoth Road. And it has, currently has a sewer interceptor, a town sewer interceptor, that runs through the property in an easement pretty much north to south through the property. There's also, in the northerly portion of the property, there's also a large Tennessee gas pipeline easement that has two large gas mains running through it. That is pretty much the correct, it's a, you know, large parcel, but it's a pretty simple proposal. Be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. We'll go to staff, then the board, and then the public. John.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll abbreviate our design review comments. Item number one, we're requesting that they address various items as they relate to the subdivision plans. And number two is as they relate to the topographic plans, that being just some nomenclature and indicating permit numbers and whatnot on the plan set. Item number three is to address the DRC comments from the assessing in the sewer division. And that was it.
Okay. Thank you.
I have nothing else. Thank you.
You're all set. Okay, Rick.
Nothing.
Tom.
All set.
John. How many, between the two lots, how many curb cuts on Mammoth Road would there be?
There are currently two curb cuts, and they will, we're proposing two curb cuts. And at the time, we did the Widmore plan, there were two abutting, single-family homes. And there, the driveway permits from DOT were issued with the contingency that those individual home driveways that are on Mammoth Road be removed, and they tie into the, our, the proposed roads, private roads.
So you dropped two single-family and?
Yeah. And so, to date, one of the houses, which is adjacent to, on the north side of Trail Haven Drive, has a new driveway that ties into Trail Haven Drive. We, for the NeighborWorks project, which we'll get into, it's the same situation. We, the site drive for that is at the same location as the previously approved driveway. And the neighbor to the north, David Bienvenu, has, we had an agreement previously, and he is, continues to honor that agreement, to tie his driveway into the new driveway for the NeighborWorks project. So, to answer your question, two curb cuts.
Thank you. That's it. Lynn. How many total units are you proposing for the subdivision? For the north side?
On the north side, 78 units. And on the Widmore side, there's six units built with 11 more units yet to be built.
Eleven more?
Eleven more.
Buildings? Or eleven more individually?
Eleven more units in three buildings.
Let him answer the question.
Yeah. There's a five, a four, and a two-unit building.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Which is, which exactly the same buildings that, you know, were, we haven't changed what was previously approved.
All set.
Okay.
No questions?
Laura.
Lisa.
All set.
Any butters or anyone with any questions, comments, concerns about the subdivision? Ian.
Anne Champa, 28 Wedgewood. I just have a question. Is Little Cohaus Brook part of the property, or is that off-site?
It's just off-site. It, well, I take that back. Part of it runs through the, in the area, the conservation area. It's off-site where the, where the NeighborWorks parcel is proposed. So, as you can see, the configuration of the site, it, the northerly part is quite a bit shallower than the southerly part. So, Little Cohaus Brook comes onto the property, flowing in a northerly direction, towards the back of new lot 50-3. And it crosses into a large ponded area, which is east of the NeighborWorks parcel, or parcel 59-4. It runs through there, but there's a beaver dam just downstream, just to the north of the property. So it creates a large ponded area, which pretty much runs along the easterly, just off the easterly sideline of lot 59-4. So, the jurisdictional wetland, the edge of the wetland itself just cuts across that northeastern corner, but there is some, the buffer does extend onto the property. And that is a 100-foot buffer.
Does the Brook end up in the conservation easement? The town?
A part of it runs through there, yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. And let's see, we've got the waiver. So I guess the only action is conditional approval. I guess we've got the same thing there.
Yep. Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we conditionally approve the subdivision plan for NeighborWorks, Southern New Hampshire, the applicant, and Lunedary Lending Trust, the owner, map 12, lot 59-3, on 73 Trail Haven, Trail Haven Drive, zoned AR1, subject to all of the precedent conditions and general and subsequent conditions as outlined in staff's recommendations memorandum dated 10 July 2013.
Motion by Lynn. Second. Okay, second by Laura. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Atentions, chair is through, and this subdivision is conditionally approved. Okay. Next step here. Neighbor Works, Southern New Hampshire, the applicant, Lunedary Lending Trust, the owner, tax map 12, proposed lot 59-4 and lot 64. Application acceptance in a public hearing for a formal review of a site plan and conditional use permits to construct 78 inclusionary workforce housing units with associated improvements at, on 73 Trail Haven Drive, zoned AR1. And completeness?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there are no outstanding checklist items. Staff recommends the application be accepted as complete.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the application as complete per staff's recommendation memorandum dated 10 July 2013.
Motion by Lynn. Who did the second? Okay, John did the second. Any discussion on completeness? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed, say nay. Atentions, chair is through, and the motion carries for completeness, and we can start a public hearing in our 65-day timeframe. So, this is the first step of the site, site plan process. Okay. Get the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Earl Blatchford. Again, the, this deals with the northerly parcel, which is identified as 59-4. It's 20.1 acres, which meets the minimum requirement for workforce housing, which is 20 acres. The, as we discussed in December, it's really the same proposal. We're proposing 78 units, two-story townhouse rental units, in 12 buildings. There are nine seven-unit townhouse buildings, and three five-unit townhouse buildings, for a total of 78 units. We, the site access road is a 1,200-foot-long private cul-de-sac. We, after going around a little bit with a proposed name, we ended up sticking with the previously approved Widmore Road designation. And the intersection at Mammoth Road is at exactly the same location as the previous Widmore intersection. So the only difference that really is the number of units. This side of the project for Widmore had 60, 66 units, and we're proposing 78. So, that's been taken into account in the traffic analysis that was submitted. The, and again, as mentioned previously, we've got the same connection of Mr. Bienvenu's driveway to, on the, from the northerly, single-family residence tying into the new Widmore Road, which was the previous condition. It's the exact same design, we're tying it exactly as it was previously designed. The layout of the project is really dictated by two things. The wetlands and the existing sanitary sewer interceptor that runs through the parcel. Our Widmore Road is designed pretty much over the top of that sewer interceptor, because obviously, you're going to have pavement over the top of it, but you can't have buildings. So, it really, it really kind of dictated how things laid out very much. And we tried to stay out of the wetland buffers as much as we could. I'll get into that in a few minutes. The project is proposed in two phases, and we're proposing to build approximately 900 feet of Widmore Road. We had initially, we're going to do a temporary cul-de-sac, but when we designed the stormwater management area, which is located along the easterly part of the property, behind the units, we found we didn't have enough room for a full cul-de-sac. So, we talked with the fire marshal about doing a hammerhead-type turnaround, and he was amenable to that. So, basically, we're proposing six buildings with 37, 38 units, plus the community building. There's a 1,000-square-foot community building, which is on the westerly side of Widmore Road, right in the center of the project. So that, and it's indicated, there are labels on the, on the buildings that indicate which phase those buildings would be constructed in. On the, that building on the north, the first one that's listed in Phase Two, on the, I'm sorry, on the easterly side, is, that is where the hammerhead is proposed to be. And there's a detail in the plan set that shows that temporary hammerhead. And then Phase Two would be remove that hammerhead, construct the rest of approximately 300 feet, plus the cul-de-sac, and remaining buildings and the parking areas. The density is, that would be allowed for this project is at 10 units per acre, is about 201 units, so we're not coming anywhere close to that density. And we're proposing small townhouse-type units, which I think is a, kind of a departure from what was envisioned when the regulations were put together. The, we're proposing a total of 168 parking spaces, including seven van-accessible handicap spaces, which gives us a little over two spaces per unit. The minimum that's required in the regulation is one and three-quarters spaces per unit, which would have a requirement of, a minimum requirement of 137 spaces. So, we're providing 31 more spaces than the minimum required. Stormwater, as I said, there's, we're proposing a large stormwater management area, about where that townhouse building label is, right in that area, between the buildings and the easterly property line. The stormwater system itself is a series, it's a closed drainage system, so it's a series of catch basins and underground pipes, and then, which flow down to a low point, and then into that detention basin. And we also have a proposed rain garden or bioretention area in the center of the cul-de-sac, where we're doing a little bit of stormwater infiltration to meet the requirements of the Department of Environmental Services. And we actually just, this week, were issued the alteration of terrain permit from DES, which covers the stormwater design and the erosion control and what have you. The utilities are basically town sewer, Penachuck water, natural gas is in Mammoth Road, and then we'll be bringing in underground telephone, electric, and cable TV from Poles in Mammoth Road. The site lighting that we're proposing is very low-level LED residential-type lighting. The fixtures are about 12 feet off the ground. It's kind of a gooseneck-type design with a shade, very low light levels, full cutoff. So, very nice for residential. And I think we had pictures, I know we had pictures at the Heritage Commission meeting, and I think we showed some photographs.
The commission liked it.
Yeah. So, and then we, the landscape plan we provide, we think it's a generous landscaping plan. There's a lot of, you know, this is a site plan, basically, it's, you know, it's considered kind of a parking lot, but, you know, it, the landscape plan sort of treats it with, like, street trees, there are several trees running along, so it gives a street tree effect, a lot of shrubs, and of course, one purple lilac per building. We didn't forget those.
They're blue and purple.
We went over and above. We gave one to every building. So we didn't forget that. As I said, the traffic study was prepared by CLD, and it's been signed off on by StanTech and also by DOT. And the application for an amendment to the driveway permit has been submitted, and that should be forthcoming very shortly. We've submitted the sewer connection permit application, and for an amendment for Widmore, plus a new connection permit for this project, and that'll get processed with the state following, following the board's conditional approval. We had one zoning issue that we discussed with the board back in December that we knew about, and that didn't change. And that was with the phasing, the way the regulation's written. If you'll recall, it allows a maximum of three buildings and up to 48 units. The way it's, the way it's written, it assumes that the, the buildings will be 16-unit buildings. And as I previously said, our buildings are five and seven-unit buildings. So we had to get a variance, apply for a variance for up to seven buildings. So basically, the six, the six residential buildings plus the community building. And we included, just to kind of cover contingencies, and really didn't, the application said up to 45 units, but actually, you're allowed up to 48 units. So it's really the number of buildings was the issue. We went to the zoning board on May 15th, and they unanimously approved that. So that was the only zoning issue that we needed relief on. As I said, we went to the Heritage Commission on May 23rd and presented the plans. They had a couple of requests, which was to extend sidewalk, add some additional sidewalk to the community building, and then extend sidewalk to the out to Mammoth Road for any school-aged children who are, need to catch the school bus. So we've provided those, and there is, so really, with those additions, there's really very extensive sidewalk throughout the project on both sides of the street. So there's very good pedestrian circulation throughout the project, a lot of crosswalks and what have you. And we've posted, there's signage on the plan. We're calling for posted speed limits of 10 miles an hour, which is typical for a parking lot. The, oh, the other thing that the Heritage Commission requested was that we delineate the handicap-accessible spaces on the plan, and we've done that as well. So we've, we've kind of, it's a little bit speculative, but we've put them where we feel that they're, you know, logical locations based on the grades and what have you, and then, but everything is set up with a nine-foot module. The spaces and the accessible aisles are all nine foot. So if the actual tenanting requirements, you know, if the unit is in a little different location, and it makes sense to move the handicap-accessible space, then, you know, that'll, can easily be done. But we've designated what we think are logical locations at this point. So, and it exceeds the town's requirements and ADA requirements. The project requires two conditional use permits. The first one is for allowing the workforce housing in the AR1 zone. And there's a letter to address to the chairman making that request. And I can, I don't know if you want me to cover that, the kind of the detail of that, or, or not? However you want to handle that.
Yes.
Okay. I can just briefly read from the letter. It's addressed to Chairman Rug. Dear Mr. Chairman, on behalf of our client, NeighborWorks of Southern New Hampshire, we are requesting a conditional use permit to allow a 78-unit rental workforce housing project in accordance with Section 2.3.3, Inclusionary Housing of the Lunedary Zoning Ordinance. The proposal meets the requirements of Section 1.5.2, Conditional Use Permits of the Lunedary Zoning Ordinance as follows. Section 1.5.2.2.1, granting the application would meet some public need or convenience. The proposed project addresses a public need for more diverse and affordable rental housing in the town of Lunedary. Section 1.5.2.2.2, granting the application is in the public interest. The proposed project is in the public interest as it helps the town of Lunedary meet the state mandate to provide affordable workforce housing. Section 1.5.2.2.3, the property in question is reasonably suited for the use requested. The proposed project site meets all zoning requirements for area, density, and services required for a workforce housing project. And as I said, we received the only relief we needed from the zoning board for the project. Section 1.5.2.2.4, the use requested would not have a substantial adverse effect on the rights of the owners of surrounding properties. The requested use is a comparable multifamily residential use to the previously approved Widmore Estates project, and should have similar impacts on surrounding properties. Section 1.5.2.2.5, the traffic generated by the proposed use is consistent with the identified function, capacity, and level of service of transportation facilities serving the community. The level of traffic generated by the proposed project is very similar to the traffic generated by the previously approved Widmore Estates project. A traffic report for the proposed project has been submitted and approved by the town's traffic consultant. An amended driveway permit for the proposed project driveway at Mammoth Road has been applied for with NHDOT. Section 1.5.2.2.6, there must be appropriate provision for access facilities adequate for the estimated traffic from public streets and sidewalks so as to assure public safety and to avoid traffic congestion. The proposed site driveway, sidewalks, and other accommodations have been appropriately designed to address public safety and traffic concerns. The proposed design has been reviewed and signed off by the Lunedary Fire and Police Departments, as well as the town's traffic consultant. Thank you for your consideration of this request. Sincerely, Earl Blatchford. Sincerely, Earl Blatchford. So that is, that's the first conditional use permit. I don't know whether you want to talk about that and then move on to the next one, or...
Board have any questions on that?
The use permit?
Yeah, just the conditional use permit, the first one. And we have another one, which is for conservation.
Correct.
Yeah. Why don't we just read that one? I think the Conservation Commission, I think, approved anyway, so...
Yes. And basically, it's for the encroachment into the Conservation Overlay District. We have a total square footage of buffer impacts of 33,740 square feet throughout the project, which is actually a little bit less than what the Widmore project had. So, the, well, that, that comparable portion of the Widmore project, so. Do you want me to read the different?
Yeah, maybe just go through with them.
Okay, the different points. So on the application, this is Form A, which is the conditional use permit for encroachment into the buffers on the, the Conservation Overlay Buffer, that's a Conservation Commission uses. Number one, the proposed construction is essential to the productive use of land, not within the Conservation Overlay District. The Conservation Overlay Buffer encroaches are necessary to construct the main stormwater management area required by the town and NHDES regulations. Construct smaller drainage soils adjacent to the proposed site access drive and stabilize slopes adjacent to the buildings and parking areas. The aforementioned buildings and parking areas are not located in the Conservation Overlay Buffer. Number two, design and construction materials will be such as to minimize impact upon the wetlands and will include restoration of the site consistent with the permitted use. The site has been designed using best management practices in accordance with NHDES guidelines in effort to protect nearby wetlands from the proposed developments. Side slope areas within the CO buffer area will be stabilized within 72 hours of final grading as called for on the erosion control plan. Number three, there is no feasible alternative route on land controlled by the applicant that does not cross the Conservation Overlay District nor has less detrimental impact upon the wetlands. Nothing in this section shall limit the applicant from exploring alternatives with the budding property owners. The layout of the site entrance drive, parking, and buildings is primarily dictated by the location of the existing town sewer interceptor that runs through the middle of the property, as well as the extensive wetlands located on-site. The layout has been designed to be as compact as practical while meeting Town of Londonary site development requirements. Number four, economic advantage is not the sole reason for the proposed location of the construction. The site has been designed with the goal of minimizing Conservation Overlay Buffer impacts to the extent reasonable while meeting the needs of the project proponent. So those are the different conditions on the Conservation Overlay District Conditional Use Application. And we did go to the Conservation Commission on May 28th and presented the applications to them, and, and there are, by the way, there are no jurisdictional wetland impacts at all on the Neighbor Works project, just buffer impacts. So, and the, we did get a favorable recommendation from the Conservation Commission after meeting with them on the 28th. And the, we haven't covered waivers yet, correct?
No.
Okay. We are requesting three waivers as part of the plan. The first one is, and there are two letters, we initially had one request, and then we, there's a second letter dated this week for two additional waiver requests. The first one is Section 2.04B, Point B, Point 4. And we're asking that the submittal fee be based on the area of disturbance by the proposed construction as opposed to the entire area of the parcel, which we've made similar requests in the past, just based on, on, I guess, fairness and practicality. The second one is Section 3.07.9.3, and that's to allow as little as 31 and 1/2 inches of drain line cover at Catch Basin 7, which is a, basically a yard drain. It's off the road in a lawn area where the regulation normally has a minimum requirement of 36 inches. So we're asking for relief of 4 and 1/2 inches of cover in a, in an area that is not subject to vehicular traffic. And then the third is Section 4.01.C. The master site plan is at a scale of 1 inch equals 80 feet, so that we can show the entire parcel in a single view on one sheet. And then all of the detail sheets inside the plan package, the site grading, utilities, layout, landscaping, erosion control, what have you, and all of the profiles are all 40 scale, 1 inch equals 40 scale, which meets the requirement. So it's just the master site plan that exceeds that scale requirement, and it's really, so you get a single view of the entire project. And again, I think we've had similar requests in the past. So those are the three waivers that we're requesting. I don't know whether we want to stop now and decide on those. Actually, the only other thing I have in the presentation is really, the, we have provided building elevations, which we...
What do we do with that?
Which we presented to the Heritage Commission on the 23rd. And the...
Have you, have you got the...
Yes, we do.
They, as I said, they're two-story townhouse buildings, New England-style with gable roofs. And if the board has a, John Jordan is here, he's a project architect. If you have any questions regarding the building architecture, I will turn that over to John. But we did go over them in detail with the Heritage Commission.
We had a good, good discussion there.
Yeah, I had a good discussion, and I think they were well-received, and so, but as I said, if there are any, any questions, we can get John up here to answer any questions you may have. And the, these PDFs aren't doing John's, the color resolution's not really coming through, but had some better displays. And there are hard copies, John did bring boards.
Yeah, it's earth tone colors.
Yeah. So, that's the overview, that's my presentation for the Neighbor Works Londonary Townhomes Plan. So be happy to answer any questions that anybody in the board or members of the audience might have.
Okay. We'll start, John.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as Earl indicated, they are, applicant is requesting three waivers. Waiver to Section 2.04B4, that requires the application fee based on total lot area. Applicant is requesting calculation, calculating the application fee based on the disturbed area, which is significantly less than the total lot area. Staff does recommend granting the waiver. Second request was to wait, Section 3.07G3, requiring, again, minimum cover of 3 feet over the drainage structure. Catch Basin in question, as Earl indicated, is located in the lawn area and was not subject to vehicular traffic. Therefore, staff recommends granting the waiver. Lastly, the waiver to Section 4.01C, requiring site plan to be drawn at 1 inch equals 40 feet. Earl has indicated that the plan that they have provided is that 1 inch equals 80 feet, and therefore, it can be shown on one single sheet, and staff recommends granting of the waiver. As far as design review items, we're requesting that the item number, or, excuse me, I'm not going to go by items. All right. Providing additional spot elevations on the detention pond basement and, as well as in the parking lot. Verifying location and number of handicap parking spaces with the zoning administrator. There are a number of comments regarding dressing items relative to the proposed gas surface, service profiles and project details and drainage report. Requesting that they update Note 10 to include the permit numbers. Removal the signature block from the landscaping detail sheet. And lastly, addressing DRC comments of the assessing in the sewer division. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll just speak a little bit to the conditional use permits. The first one is for impacts to the Conservation Overlay District. They did get a favorable recommendation from the Conservation Commission, and staff recommends granting that conditional use permit. The other one is to allow the workforce housing in the AR1 zone, and I, staff believes that the applicant has shown that they meet the criteria as established by the zoning ordinance, and we recommend granting that conditional use permit as well.
Okay, thank you. We'll do the board, I'll start, Rick.
I'm all set.
Okay. Tom?
I'm all set.
John?
Are the units going to be rental units or for sale?
They're all rental units.
Oh, rental. That was my only question.
Okay.
Yeah, Lisa.
Yeah, no, very thorough. Thank you. I'm all set.
Yeah, all set. Are there any others, anyone for the public, any questions, comments, or concerns on the site plan?
Anne Champa, 28 Wedgewood. I remember last year when you first brought your plans to the, I think it was the planning When I had seen the plans, I was just curious about the, the design. I don't know if this is the right form to ask. Was there plantings put in front of the buildings in the latest version? Before, there was just like a curb up to the building. Is that...
Your landscaping plan, Cynthia?
Yes.
You wanted to incorporate more sidewalks, so I think we created some, a little bit of room space in front of the building.
Because that's what I had asked.
Yeah. Because we didn't have many sidewalks on that region.
Yeah, the landscape plan includes, what we did was, we show all the major plantings along the roads and the parking area, and then there's, there's a typical seven-unit planting plan and a typical five-unit planting plan. Just past the profiles, right there.
Yeah, because it seemed like the originals that you were showing, there were curb was right next, you know, the parking lot, the curb, and then the building, there was not...
Yeah, these vary more, the, the buildings, as you can see, the buildings are generally further back than the project, and I think you're referring to the...
The content.
Well, no, I think the project photos that were, that were shown for...
Right. One of our other projects, yeah.
And Hooks, right?
Hooks, yeah.
Yeah. And in those photos, which are existing projects that they've done, those were, you're right, the, the units were sitting closer to the sidewalk.
Right.
So we've got, but to answer your question, the, there are plantings around all of the buildings, and I don't know if you can zoom in on one of the typicals? Each, each sheet's got a typical planting plan for the building in, kind of on this, off to the side. Cynthia, there's one, so that's the typical plan for the seven unit.
Mm-hmm.
So what you see on the overall plan are the major plantings, and then these are the shrubs and the shrub plantings that will, typical planting plans around each of the buildings. So that's the typical for the seven unit, and then there's a similar planting detail for the five unit.
As I say, it looks like a wonderful design before, but that was the only comment I think I made back then.
Yeah.
And I'm glad you incorporated, it looks much, you know...
Yeah, we think we provided a, you know, a pretty generous planting plan, should, should look very nice.
Yeah, but it's, I, I like it, instead of concrete against the building, people have a little bit of greenery in front of the buildings, and it's, it's very nice design.
More of a garden aspect to it.
Thank you.
And speaking of gardens, there is, we talked about a community garden.
Yes.
And there is one, an area that's being set aside for a community garden up adjacent to the cul-de-sac, so.
Good. Anyone else? Seeing none.
I have a question. How does, with workforce housing, where does this put us as a percentage? You know, with all the other workforce housing that's going in, where are we as far as...
Good question. I, currently, I, I don't know. We hadn't looked at that.
This would be the first one.
This is actually the first one, John.
I think John, me, is looking at the total housing in Londonary.
Yeah, so, so, so total, total workforce housing, this is considered the first workforce housing project?
This is the first one that's gotten this far, yes.
Yeah, this far, right, but we also have the, the other project that's off of...
Perkins Road, Wallace Farms, that is coming along.
That is coming along, so, so from, from percentage of workforce housing, if I include those, this project and that other project?
240 units plus 78.
What's our, what's our, I'm going to use the word quota, it's probably not the right term, but...
I'm not aware that we have a quota.
Is there a percentage of workforce housing?
There's a minimum that we're supposed to be achieving across the town, and I'd have to come back with what that is, but...
But there's no maximum?
I'm not aware that there's a maximum.
No, I think you have to provide...
Elderly housing, there is.
You have to provide for it, that's the way the legislation reads.
I just didn't know if there was a...
No, no hard number.
Okay.
You're welcome. No further comments from the board or anything? We've got three waivers, two conditional use permits, and then to the conditional approval. So...
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the applicant's request for waivers number one through three, as outlined in staff's recommendation memorandum dated 10 July 2013.
Second, we have a motion by Lynn, second by John, on the three waivers that have requested any discussion by the board. Seeing none, although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay, abstentions, affirmative, and the three waivers have been granted. We'll go to the conditional use permit for improvements within the Conservation Overlay District.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board grant the conditional use permit to allow construction of a culvert crossing and construction of slopes in this, as the Conservation Overlay District buffer, as noted in staff's recommendation memorandum dated 10 July 2013, and in accordance with the Conservation Commission's recommended condition that the applicant place COD signage on the site in accordance with the plan approved by the Conservation Commission on 11 June 2013.
Okay.
Just one point of clarification, the culvert crossing is actually in the conditional use permit request for the amended Widmore.
I apologize for that.
Pardon?
That, that's amiss.
Okay, my motion is amended as required.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by Lynn and second by John. A signal discussion, although in favor of the Conservation Overlay Conditional Use Permit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay, abstentions, affirmative, and the Conservation Overlay District Conditional Use Permit is granted. And now we have the workforce housing, to allow workforce housing in an AR1 zone, conditional use permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board grant the conditional use permit to allow construction of workforce housing in the AR1 zone, as noted in staff's recommendation memorandum dated 10 July 2013.
Okay. Motion by Lynn, second by John, any discussion by the board? Seeing none, although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay, abstentions, affirmative, and the conditional use permit to construct workforce housing in the AR1 zone is granted. And now we go to the conditional approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the planning board conditionally approve the site plan for the Neighbor Works Southern New Hampshire applicant, Londonary Lending Trust owner, MAP 12, Lot 59-3 on 73 Trail Haven Drive, subject to all precedent conditions and general and subsequent conditions as outlined in staff's recommendation memorandum dated 10 July 2013.
Second. Okay, motion by Lynn for conditional approval, seconded by John, any discussion by the board? Seeing none, although in favor, signify by saying aye. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Absentient, show us affirmative, and the site plan is conditionally approved.
Thank you. You're welcome.
One more to go. Neighborhood Works Southern New Hampshire applicant, London Dairy Lending Trust owner, tax map 12, Lot 59-3. This is an application acceptance in a public hearing for a formal review of a site plan and conditional use permit to amend the previously approved 2004 site plan for Whittmore Estates based on a proposed subdivision of the same lot, which would limit the billable area associated with the 2004 site plan approval on 73 Trail Haven Drive, Zone AR1.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there is one outstanding checklist item with an associated waiver request. Assuming board... Excuse me, yeah. Assuming the board grants a waiver, staff would recommend the application be accepted as complete. Checklist waiver is that to Section 3.07b, which requires a drainage study. There's been no change to the previously approved plan of... Design of the plan. Therefore, staff recommends granting of the waiver request. Again, as Earl go into detail, this was amending an existing previously approved plan, and this portion of the site actually has the detention pond and the drainage analysis has been done in the previous...
Previous one.
In the previous plan. That's why we're in agreement with granting of the waiver.
Okay, so the waiver is the Section 3.07b, require the drainage study and everything.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the applicant's request for a waiver, as outlined in staff's recommendation memorandum dated 10 July 2013.
Second. Motion by Lynn, second by John. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Absentient, show us affirmative. Motion carries, and a waiver is granted, and the application is now complete.
Yeah, one additional one, though, is again, would Ben... We have it listed as a waiver to the site plan regs, that being the fee. Cynthia, again, right, the applicant's requesting a waiver to Section 2.04b4, which requires an application fee based on, again, total lot area. Applicant requests calculating the application fee based on the disturbed area, which is significantly less than the total lot area. Staff does recommend granting of the waiver. Again, this is... Because this is an existing partially constructed site with a large area set aside in a conservation easement. Sorry about that.
Do we approve that now, or do we approve that after we accept the application's complete?
Is that checklist like that?
No.
I'm sorry.
I missed.
Okay.
We're good, that's for later.
Okay, that's coming next. Okay, so the application is complete?
It's complete, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Board accept the application as complete per staff's recommendation memorandum dated 10 July 2013.
Motion by Lynn, second by John. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Absentient, show us affirmative, and the plan is... Application is complete. So we'll start our 65-day timeframe in public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earl Blatchford from Hayner Swanson. The plan before you is for an amended site plan for the Whittmore Estates project, and we've put that... We've submitted that at the request of John and Cynthia. Basically, it's a simple proposal. We've gone out and surveyed what has been built out there. We've done an ASBILT survey of Trail Haven Drive, which is the 700-foot cul-de-sac, and the drainage and sewer and other utilities that were run into the site. And there's one six-unit townhouse building with driveway and parking that is also reflected in the ASBILT survey. So there are six units that are built, and there are 11 more units in three buildings which are proposed to be completed. And it's per the original, originally approved plan. So basically, we've just kind of taken the elements of the approved Whittmore site plan and dovetailed them with the actual ASBILT portion of it. Otherwise, really, there are no changes in the originally approved plan. So there's a total of 17 age-restricted townhouse units proposed. The utilities for the project are exactly the same as the utilities that I covered in the NeighborWorks project. The only thing that was eliminated, there was a walking path that connected the two portions of Whittmore Estates, and now that there's two separate projects, that walking path was eliminated. There were two wetland crossings associated with that, and plus, the feeling is that there really are plenty of existing natural paths out there. So that aspect of it was eliminated, because we didn't want to connect two separate projects. Before, it made sense, because they were kind of two... It was a way to connect the same development, and now it doesn't make sense, because they are separate projects, so. As I said, this property, besides the 17 units for the Whittmore Estates, the back portion of it contains the conservation easement. It's entirely on the new Lot 59-3. We tried to avoid kind of bisecting that over the two proposed lots. So the... There is a conditional use permit associated with this as well, and there are two aspects to it. There are Conservation Overlay District buffer impacts, which total 10,185 square feet. And then the previously mentioned culvert crossing, which is basically the culvert crossing, and it's in the portion of the driveway that was running out, back out towards Mammoth Road, between right there. That's what the culvert crossing is, and that has a total jurisdictional wetland impact of 2,670 square feet. We have, with the assistance of GOV Environmental, who did the previous wetlands work for the Whittmore project, they have made application to the Wetlands Bureau to renew that same culvert crossing. So the... That's really the only permit, aside from modifying the sewer discharge from the Whittmore project, that's the only permit, state permit, that we have to apply for. And so that's in process, and we should be hopefully getting that pretty shortly. We've just checked on the progress of it. It's in progress, so... And the clock is ticking up there, so we should get that fairly soon. We applied for it in May, so that should be forthcoming pretty shortly. The... Want me to go through the conditional use permit?
Yes, please.
The details of that? All right, so basically, it's the same, the same five conditions. Number one, the proposed construction is essential to the productive use of land, not within the Conservation Overlay District. The proposed culverted driveway crossing provides access to an upland building area that otherwise would not be accessible due to the state's restrictions on the number of curb cuts allowed from Mammoth Road. In other words, where the four-unit and the two-unit building are, that driveway encroaches... It comes very close to Mammoth Road, but we don't have an additional curb cut, so the only way to get to it was via that wetland crossing. And we tried to cross at a narrow, you know, a narrow point. So it's the same, exact same proposal as was previously approved by the state and by the town, so. Number two, design and construction materials will be such as to minimize impact upon the wetlands and will include restoration of the site consistent with the permitted use. The driveway width and fill height have been minimized to the extent possible while meeting town requirements. Slope stabilization areas adjacent to buildings and parking areas have been minimized as much as possible. Number three, there is no feasible alternative route on land controlled by the applicant that does not cross the Conservation Overlay District, nor has less detrimental impact upon the wetlands. Nothing in this section shall limit the applicant from exploring alternatives with abutting property owners. Due to the state's restrictions on driveway permits for the property, there is no way to access the upland building area without crossing the wetland. Economic advantage is not the sole reason for the proposed location of the construction. This project was previously approved and has been partially constructed, Phase One completed to date. This request is to complete the southerly portion of the previously approved Whittmore Estates project, which the remaining portion was identified as Phase Two. So what's been built to date is Phase One. What is yet to be built was identified as Phase Two of the previously approved project, which had a total of six phases, two in the south and four in the north. So the four in the north are now gone, so... And again, the square footage of the wetland impact for that culverted crossing is 2,670 square feet, and then we have sort of cumulative buffer impacts of 10,185 square feet. And again, this is a reduction of the previous application on both counts, both the buffer encroachment and the actual impacts to jurisdictional lands are less than the what was approved for the Whittmore project. So in essence, all the aspects, the utilities, the drainage system, the landscaping, the lighting and what have you, is all as was previously approved. We haven't changed anything on those. And we have in... We did submit a letter at John's request regarding the stormwater system that's been built to date, which includes catch basins, underground pipes, and the stormwater management area. And we've looked at those, and we've compared it to the design, and have wrote... Written a letter that certifies that the... That everything seems to be... After reviewing it, it is built in substantial compliance with the approved design, so. That's basically it. I know it's a very brief presentation, but be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Okay. John?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, real quickly through the design review items, we're requesting that they address items relative to the existing conditions, plans, site grading, site utilities, site layout, utility profiles and project details, requesting that they update the note to, again, include the permit numbers, and lastly, address the DRC comments of the assessing in the sewer division. That's all I had.
Okay, anything, Cynthia?
No, thank you.
You're all set. I'll start with Al.
I'm all set.
All set, Letha?
Again, very thorough, thank you.
No questions?
No, my only question's on the parking for the five-unit building, the parking lot configuration. I just didn't know if you looked... I know their configuration. It looks like it might be a long walk in the middle of winter time to go from... Up here all the way down to your car. Just an observation.
Yeah, I mean, again, it was... This part of the site is kind of the same thing. The wetlands and the wetland buffers kind of dictate the layout.
Yep.
And that's kind of... And we didn't revisit it. That's what was previously approved, that was what was previously designed, so it's a short walk. It's not a long walk. That was one of the observations.
For healthy people.
Some people might care.
John?
I'm all set.
All set. Rick? Are there any... Butters, or anyone from the public have any questions, comments, or concerns on this site plan? We'll bring it back to the board, and we have, let's see...
One additional waiver, Art, regarding the fee that went over, that needs to be acted upon.
Okay, this is for the 2.04b...
Correct.
Because the application would be based... Okay, that's the B thing, just like the last time, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the applicant's request for a waiver to Section 2.04.b4, as outlined in staff's recommendation memorandum dated 10 July 2013.
Okay, motion by Lynn, second by John. Any discussion on this waiver? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Absentient, show us affirmative, and the waiver has been granted. And we have this conditional use permit. Actually, I guess there's two parts to the permit, I think, for the conservation.
I don't think there's two separate parts, it's one permit.
Okay, just one, because it was plural up here on the thing, so... But there is just one paragraph.
Again, a typo.
Yeah, so it's one conditional use permit.
One permit.
Without a culvert crossing.
This one is with.
Yeah, culvert crossing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Board grant the conditional use permit to allow construction of a culvert crossing and construction of slopes in the COD buffer, as noted in staff's recommendation memorandum dated 10 July 2013, and in accordance with the Conservation Commission's recommended condition, that the applicant place COD signage on the site in accordance with the plan approved by the Conservation Commission on 11 June 2013.
Second. Okay, motion by Lynn, second by John, for the conditional use permit for Conservation Overlay District. Seeing no discussion by the board, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Absentient, show us affirmative, and the conditional use permit has been granted.
And with that being granted, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we conditionally approve the amended site plan for Whittmore Estates for NeighborWorks Southern New Hampshire applicant, London Dairy Lending Trust owner, MAP 12, Lot 59-3 on 73 Trail Haven Drive, subject to all precedent conditions and general and subsequent conditions as outlined in staff's recommendations memorandum dated 10 July 2013.
Okay, motion by Lynn, second by John, for a conditional approval. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Absentient, show us affirmative, and the site plan has been conditionally approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very, very much.
You're welcome. All's good job, very thorough plans, and...
Thank you very much. So what you're working on is...